Shop where we will be discussing and following up with a self evaluation that we conducted earlier this year. So I'll call this meeting to order 6:02 PM. We'll start with the roll call. Ms. Fair.
Hi, here, present.
Ms. Jones?
Present.
Holly just emailed me that she is in a meeting for work and will join us when she is able to. Mr. Bryant?
Present.
Mr. Christensen?
Here.
Mr. Derrick's?
I'm here.
And Chair is here, so we've got six people present and missing Holly Tower for the time being. We'll go ahead and stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic of America, to the Constitution, one nation, under God, indivisible, and free of any means, no other means, and no other power.
We begin all of our meetings by reading our mission statement, and I will share that this evening. The mission of the Red Wing Public Schools is to educate and inspire all students as they realize their full potential and become respectful, responsible, and productive citizens. I'd like to welcome Gail Gilman, who is joining us this evening from the Minnesota School Boards Association. She has conducted our, or helped us with our self evaluation that we did back in July. We've had a chance to review her findings and she tabulated, MSBA tabulated, all of our data and combined them, and she did put together a summary that I did send out to all of you earlier this week. I hope you've all had a chance to review that summary. It really did tie together a lot of what we had talked about back in July. And our mission this evening is to review her findings and to come up with a goal or two, maybe three at the most, things that we can work on as a group moving forward, at least through the end of this year until a new board takes over. And then we will hopefully give some ideas of where this group has been headed moving forward. So with that, I will turn it over to Gail, who will lead our discussion this evening. So thank you again for joining us, Gail.
Oh, you're very welcome. Good evening, everyone, and it is a pleasure to be back with you. Good to see everybody. And you'll have to prompt me when Holly joins too. Maybe she'll show up on the screen, hopefully, but hopefully, and then hopefully she'll join us soon as well, so she doesn't miss out on the conversation. So Pam did a nice job as Chair, setting the, kind of the tone, the background for this evening. You'll remember, we met together on July 27th, reviewed the school board self evaluation, the assessment, if you will, that you as a board team took. And when I say board team, that was the elected board members, along with your superintendent, Carsten. And I'll also just remind you that there were 72 questions, and the questions all related to the five standards of school board leadership. And those five standards, again, are conduct and ethics, vision, structure, accountability, and the final one is advocacy and communication. So when we met back on July 27th, we reviewed the things that were opportunities to pat yourself on the back, because things were going really well, and those were strengths of you as a board team. We also talked about opportunities that you could take a look at for the future, for growth, maybe some changes, some tweaking in things that you're currently doing. While you visited that evening, I took notes, along with facilitating, and then I did put together the summary of things that really moved, rose to the top, of things that you wanted to possibly work on now and into the future. And so thank you to Pam for sending that summary out to everyone, along with your policy 209 on the code of ethics. So you've got that in front of you. Just a note of what you received in that summary, again, I did highlight, and I highlighted on my notes here too, that that evening we had good discussion, we had engaged discussion. Did everybody agree? No, I thought everybody was open and honest in their comments, and I appreciated that. And I hope that those can be our ground rules for this evening as well, for you as a board team. The other thing that I noted is, your hearts are definitely in the right place in looking at student achievement for all students, and you voiced that as a challenge, actually, especially during this time of COVID and the pandemic. I also said in my summary that, just as Pam reiterated, you should now, as a next step, take a look at one to three things that you'd like to work on in this coming year, and look at quality versus quantity. So we're not looking for lots of big ideas, but things that you can do, that you can agree upon as a team, that will help you move forward. I did put a summary in there talking about, probably the biggest challenge for this group was trust and respect. We talked a lot about the conduct and ethics with this group, and challenged you, really. I said, this really should be addressed with your current board in anticipation. I'm going to read it, because I know we have a number of people who are viewing this evening as well. And so I said, this should really be addressed with the current board, and in anticipation of new board members, new team members, that you'll be bringing on, and you'll learn the outcome of it, gosh, in a little bit over a week. As your current board team considers next steps to develop an atmosphere of trust and respect, I would encourage each of you, and for those candidates out there listening, and the community as well, I would encourage each individual to ask themselves the following questions. Is this what we want to model for our students, staff, and community? Also ask yourself, would our behavior towards one another be acceptable in the classroom, with staff interactions, and within the community? And how can the board team set aside previous issues and move forward to set a precedence that shows trust and respect? And how do you ask yourself, how do you want to be remembered as a board member and as a board team? And you'll remember that I'm a former board member like you as well, and that's one thing that, as I look back, I think about that. How have I been remembered? I know how I've been remembered. Some things positive, and some things where folks disagreed with me, but how is it that you want to be remembered? And then think about your role on this board team. Are you wanting to be adversarial, dysfunctional, part of the problem? Or would you rather be supportive, respectful, visionary, a team player, and part of the solution? So that was really the crux, I think, of what this group talked about. And I also have to say that I valued all the honest communication that you had in addressing the challenges. With that theme in mind, I do want to do a little bit deeper dive into the summary that I put together for you, in that I looked at, and I summarized under each of those five standards with a double asterix, the things that I saw as higher priority for you to look at as a board team. You'll notice that there were a number of things that were higher priority, so you're obviously not going to be able to address everything right away. Some things you'll just kind of start adding into your procedures and protocols that you use as a board. So you'll notice that there were, there are several things in each category that were highlighted. So that kind of is a summary, a background. Our goal then for this evening, I'm going to ask to hear from each of you in just a second, about your reaction to the summary. And before I do, I'm actually going to call on your superintendent and your board chair, since there has been an amount of time that's passed since July 27th, a lot of things have happened, and I am, I'm not linked in necessarily to what those things might be, and some of the community members listening in this evening or viewing may be interested in the update too. So for Carsten and for Pam, my question for you is, since we last visited, has there been any action, any updates, that just simply were implemented into your work as board chair and as superintendent, that you'd like to share with me, and also with the group as well? Let's see.
You know, I can certainly jump in first.
Yes, okay, great. Thanks, Carsten, for that.
So just an update on actions or other updates, as far as what's transpired over the last couple of months? Okay. I think communications, you know, which is integral, of course, to trust, is one of the things we've done some improvements on. They're subtle, but I think they will eventually lead to really good changes. First, we've had, or I've had several one-on-one meetings with nearly all of the board members. I think we've had at least two with each one, and then we're just starting the third round. Holly did decide not to participate in those meetings, which is fine, but I've had, you know, meetings with the others regularly. And it's, you know, sometimes we do it virtually, sometimes they're in person. Most of the time, they're here in the district office. I did have the chance to visit Jim over where he works in Goodhue, and so I personally like the flexibility in terms of, you know, if they're virtual or in person, and the location, and I'm definitely willing to consider that. I know that some of those meetings occurred during COVID, and so we've had a lot of significant priorities to focus on. The one thing that, I enjoy the meetings very much, but, you know, it's always, I always feel a little bit awkward, because I don't want to violate the open meeting law, and I don't want to start lobbying board members behind the scenes. And so that can pose kind of a challenge, and maybe we can discuss that at some point in the future, as far as how those meetings should take place. Other communication stuff included some, brought back some information from other procedural manuals, to develop a rough draft of the school board procedures manual. And obviously, that's a school board's manual, it's not Carsten's manual. But we're going to start talking about that at the Legislative and Policy Committee, and hopefully we'll take it to a board meeting for discussion and approval. That would include some real tentative protocols about communications with each other, including things like sharing information during the one-on-one meetings, you know, to the whole board, so everyone has, you know, similar information, you know, and those kinds of things. Also, we've, over the summer, we had some significant workshop discussions about COVID, you know, just like every other school board in the state. And then I think we've been able to reengage with our administrative reports, to give more timely information about the things we're doing. We were doing that for several years, but COVID really threw me for a loop. And so those administrative reports were really minimal until just recently, and now we're kind of back in the flow. So that's, those are some of the things that we've tackled more recently.
Hey, very good, very good. Pam, how about for you as board chair, things that, on the board side of things, that may have been implemented, and if you need to, or what would like to do a spin-off on the things Carsten has shared, I think that would be fine, too.
Yeah, before I lose my thought, Jess, you can talk maybe a little bit, I don't want to put you on the spot, but there have been some robust movement in terms of getting some stakeholders to the table with some of our committees, so I'll turn that over to you in a little bit, just to explain more about those committees, and getting feedback from the community stakeholders. But one thing that you talked about identifying Gail as needing improvement, is really helping define roles of the school board members, and helping new members as they come on now in January, to know how this board is functioning, and to disseminate clear roles and expectations, and guidelines, and parameters, and those kinds of things. And so Lisa Stigerta and I have started, and I know Heidi Jones has also been working with us, on pulling together some really good information for all new board members when they come on. I believe that we're going to be holding some virtual meetings prior to the new folks taking on their new roles on January 1st, so that people can come on January 1st with some good background. The other piece of that is, there are seven board members, not just four new board members. And so we'd like all, we're going to build in seven binders of information. And so, you know, especially as a new board member, you get inundated with information right off of the bat, and it's hard to get all of that information in the rotation of what we need to do on a daily basis. So I think being able to orient new folks in a better way is certainly a goal that I would like to see us moving towards. And also, you know, your question number 18, Superintendent Anderson, when you talked about having those monthly meetings and getting information to all board members in a timely manner, that's a really important piece of those monthly meetings, but secondary, or maybe first, the first piece of why that meeting is important, is that ongoing building of trust. Communication certainly is a part of that meeting on a monthly basis, but I think building trust is a big piece of that, and so I'd like to see that continue as well. Jess, do you have anything that you can add to those district advisory meetings, and how we've been able to look at stakeholders in those, invite those people?
Yeah, I can talk, we have about eight committees, one being new as the district equity team. And really what we did was to make sure, because I think there were, there was one board member on a lot of committees, which I think sometimes hurts the communication. And so what we asked is that we kind of transitioned to having one board member on each committee, so that you guys can really inform each other as well, when you're at board meetings. So that's one of the shifts that we did, and then also made sure that we had a parent and students on each committee. What we asked for is that they would be 10th grade students, so that they can kind of transition and be on the committee for longer than one year. And then their role will be to get the new 10th grader to be on, so we have that ongoing student voice as well, and then the ongoing parent voice. Is that any other, anything else you wanted me to add, Pam?
No, I think it's just important to highlight that that is a piece that we are also working on, and I know that that has been addressed in some of Gail's findings as well, so thanks, Jess.
Oh, okay, yep.
Yeah, no, that's important. Does anybody else have any, as you read through the summary that was sent out by Gail, is there anything else that struck you as, hey, we are doing that now, where we've taken that piece and we're rolling with it? Does anybody have any comments on that?
All right, well, as you think of things, go ahead and put your name in the queue, and Gail, I'll turn it back to you then.
Okay, thank you, Carsten and Pam, and also Jess. I don't know if she knew she was going to be put on the spotlight, in the spotlight tonight, but she did a great job, so thank you for that. So I was writing notes as each of them were speaking, and just to do a recap, and then I am actually going to call on each board member for some feedback and thoughts. So communications was certainly something that we talked about, and I'm tying back to Carsten's update, first of all. Communications was something that you talked about a lot, and so hats off to you all for having the one-on-one meetings with the superintendent, and for Carsten to make them available to you. Carsten asked about possible violation of open meeting law. As long as Carsten is meeting with one board member, and there is not a discussion about how are you going to vote, there's no problem for him to be doing that. And so I think that happens in a lot of districts, and if that's something that you find helpful, I would encourage you to continue it. I would say that, wow, for some to have had even three meetings beyond, I mean, with a board chair, normally Carsten and your board chair are going to be meeting together quite a bit, but if there are other board members who have had even, you know, three meetings, that's a lot for him to have carved out that time. So as you think about moving forward, it's a great way, as Pam said, to keep the lines of communication open. It's an opportunity to build some trust, it's an opportunity to ask some questions, and I think it gives Carsten a good read on his board members, the board team as well, knowing what types of information board members have participated in our phase, well, phase one, and also phase three, and we talk about the stages of board development, and we talk about what board members want to know, and for some, some of you want a lot of information and have a lot of questions, and that's okay. I sometimes see that with new board members, that's where the majority of the questions are going to be coming out, and, you know, just because there's a curiosity, and there's a big learning curve. And then there are other board members that are, you know, we, our administration has made a recommendation, and they might ask one question, did you think about that, or have we explored this? And then move on. And so for Carsten, I think it's helpful, because he gets to understand individual board members, and that will help him as he preps for meetings, and knowing the kinds of information to gather for, especially the large topics, the big discussion items. And I think it will also be important for Carsten, for you to continue that when you have some new board members, that those meetings may be happening a little bit more often. But again, not a violation of the open meeting law, so you don't have to worry about that. When you start bringing in a couple of board members, that's when we would start to raise some red flags, but again, to have those one-on-ones are just fine. You also talked about the procedure manual, and I remember last time we talked about some of the protocols with how we communicate, who communicates, who speaks for the board, so I think this is a great time to be looking at that, and you'll have it in place, in order, as you bring a new board on in January. Obviously, the COVID discussion, and again, my hats off to all of you for the quick action that you continue to need to take with COVID. I'm sure every day, you're wondering, what's it going to be today? And so with that, hats off to you for having those discussions. And then, again, the final thing that I heard Carsten say was, re-engaging with admin reports, and that's another communications tool, and it's obvious that when you're in the midst of COVID and the big decisions, if, as an administrator, you've got to start balancing COVID, safety of students, distance learning hybrid versus an admin report. As a superintendent, he's going to go to looking at the safety of students, and what's best, as far as decisions with education, rather than his admin reports. But nice that you're able to get those re-engaged. And then Pam, you talked about having an opportunity to define those roles and responsibilities, and that you've got a team to take a look at that for orientation with new board members. I think that is spot on, and I'm hoping that you'll seriously consider looking at that as an opportunity for growth as a board, and that's something that you'll just do in an ongoing way, as new board members come on, not just this year, but in years to come. Don't lose sight of the fact that we have our new board member orientation year at a glance on our MSBA website, so you can use that as a tool to work from. And having all board members, whether you've been on one year, or 10 years, or 20 years, just reviewing that, I think is very good, so hats off to you for that. And then Jess talked about the committees, and doing some restructuring with committees, and I know that came up last time too, as something that you wanted to talk about in your committee structure. I like what I heard with having one board member, and then expanding that to having stakeholders, your students, what a great, great idea, 10th graders, so that you've got that continuity, and having them provide input, and then helping with their successor, and also parents. I mean, what better way to do that? So that is a really nice model. And that focus on equity, that came up loud and clear from your group last time as well, that you really want to hone in on your work with equity, diversity, inclusion within the school. So from the outsider perspective, lots of really good things have happened, and that's what we'd like to see as a result of the in-services with the school board self-evaluation. So now, I'd like to hear from the other board members, to just either react to the things that Carsten and Pam have shared, or comments that you'd like to make in general. Maybe there's some things you as an individual have done to move things forward, maybe there are some things that you think could use some tweaking yet, or just after having read my summary, what are some things that you want to make sure we talk about yet this evening? So with that, the floor is out there. Pam, I'll probably give you a chance to speak at the end, if there's anything as wrap-up. But do we have a board member that would like to go first? And I'll jot some notes down for you. And if you're, oh, and it looks like Heidi needs to unmute, if she's...
Darn, I can't ever get away from that one. So, you know, as we're doing this, I think this has been, this is a little painful for me. I'm leaving the board after 12 years, and I recognize there's a lot of, a lot of things to address. But I think what we want to do, you know, I'm trying to hang on to that mindset of, let's prepare ourselves for that new board, because it's a new team. But I think it's, I think we have an opportunity now to put together some structure and framework about, you know, what our hopes and aspirations are for moving the district forward. I'm very cognizant of the referendum timeline, it seems like we kind of just passed it, but honestly, in two years, this district most likely will be asking for those referendum dollars again. So when you've got new board members coming on, and you've got about 18 months before you want to start really digging into the public, saying, you know, what do you want to see next? Have we lived up to our referendum promises? You want a high trust level in the board, and really, that 18 months with a new board is not a lot of time. So I think that work, as soon as you pass one referendum, the work to pass the next one already begins, the day after you pass the last one. So I'm very conscious of what, of the community's eyes on us, not only with the COVID response that we have currently in our laps, but what's ahead, because 18 months in an institutional framework, to go out, to ask your local supporters to support the district, is not a long time. And so I think the work, the work of the board is going to be very critical going forward, along with, you know, the equity work that has risen to the top. I was hoping to have those conversations years ago. I tried, but the board really wasn't willing at that time. So I think we have a lot of work ahead. So I'm, I'm, I tried to narrow it down to what my main concerns, so I think team building is priority number one. And I know MSBA has a phase three program, so I was thinking we should be re-examining for a goal, what do we expect of each other as far as boardsmanship, or attendance at trainings? You know, does the board have expectations that they would like to see every new board member in the first two years maybe, complete, phase one and two, which are mandatory, but also three and four? And those are some team building pieces, and it gets you out into what are other districts' experience? I mean, that's been great for me as a board member, to get context about, oh, many districts experience this area, or this is challenging, and other districts, wow, you guys seem to be doing it really well, what's the secret sauce, right? So I would, I would hope the board can entertain some goals about what your expectations, what are your expectations of each other, attending trainings that advance the board as a team? And get away from perhaps personal alliances into, what does a high-performing board look like? What are those standards? What are we aspiring to? And I think that's important, to model that for the district. And that's the only way, I mean, we're the top level of this organization, so we better, the only way we're accountable is accountable to each other, and to the public for delivering what we say we're going to do. I think, along with the, I think this board missed opportunities with the poverty discussions, or the poverty shift in our community after the 2008 referendum. But we have an opportunity now to become more informed about the equity issue, so I think we need to be informed about demographics. And I think, I see a lot of hope for the district with the creation of, and reactivation of some of the committees, and the appropriate outreach to a community spectrum of folks that are going to serve on that, on those committees, along with the board representation. So the board is learning, because our district has learned, but our board hasn't always learned about what are the challenges for 40% of our learned about what are the challenges for 40% of our students? Or, you know, what are the issues that a family living in, in socioeconomic distress, how does that change the student's perspective in the classroom? Or the students and the family's ability to, to do that work together? I'm gonna stop for a moment, because I've probably spoken enough. But I really do appreciate the opportunity to have a discussion, and I think it's, it's great that we have Gail here facilitating, just so we can, we can move forward together. Thank you.
Very good. Thanks, thanks Heidi. And I was writing notes down, and a couple of things that just come to me that I starred was developing that strong board team as you move forward, and then that link in with the poverty shift, the demographics, the equity within your school district. So that seems to be a theme. Thank you. Who would like to go next? Well, I could...
I don't mind.
Okay. Janie, you beat him to the punch, and then I'll go to Arlen after that. How about that? Does that sound fair?
Oh, for sure. Yep. Um, you know, I, I kind of agree with Heidi. I think when we bring new board members on, I think it's a great opportunity. And I do have some concerns with COVID. You know, it's gonna be even more hard to build trust and build relationship and build kind of a work relationship. So I think we just have to be cognizant of how to welcome people and make sure they feel included and, um, you know, respected and part of the team. So, um, I, you know, I just think there's some current situation, you know, obstacles that we're gonna have to, that, that, that the new board will have to just be very intentional about. So, um, and I think that's all of us. Whenever you come on the, on a school board, you just want to be welcomed and try to understand as much as you can, and it's a very new thing. So I definitely think we have lots of opportunity to get better at that. And I'd agree, I think Karsten's meetings are a really good thing to make sure everybody has the opportunity for, you know, kind of one-on-one access with him and to get his perspective on things. So I really appreciate that, because I'm kind of more of a relationship-based person, and, um, you know, I like discussing things and such. And then I think, you know, one thing to maybe think about, another opportunity for us to discuss tonight is, I think the email protocol kind of thing is gonna be something that we need to hash out as a board, especially, you know, again, with new school board members coming on. I don't think it's necessarily controversial, but I, I just think there's some gray area there that I think is gonna maybe lead to some possible, whether it's disagreement or, um, you know, just different perspectives. So, and I think that's all I have to share. You know, again, I think, um, I'm just very concerned about making sure the new board members come on and, and feel welcomed and, and included, especially during these hard times of doing meetings over a computer. So...
Very good. Thanks, Janie, I appreciate that. So loud and clear on welcoming and orienting your new board members that are coming on. You like the one-on-ones, a plus on that, the opportunity to interact with Karsten and, and ask questions. And then, um, looking at the email protocol, and that was something that did come up last time, too. And it sounds to me like that might be something that will tie into your procedures handbook. But we can talk about that yet this evening, too. Arlen, you're up, sir.
I drew the lucky straw, huh?
Yeah, you did. You were trying to fight for the mic last time, I could see that, and...
I was trying to hold my hat back. I don't know. A few of our meetings have gotten a little contentious in the last, recently. And I respect everybody with their opinion of what we're having at our meeting, but I wish our meeting could proceed in a little more orderly manner. So I'm just gonna put it out here, we worked hard to get the board packet out, I believe, by Thursday, or is it Wednesday, before the Monday night meeting, so board members can review and hopefully have a chance, if there's an issue, to get further information from the superintendent. We can't do much between board members with open meeting law or anything, if there is, if that information is available from that. And the discussions still have to take place at the board, and I recognize it. But I would hope that, and I'm saying this to myself also, when an item comes up for discussion, you shouldn't need to speak on it more in one time, for the most part, because I think it's great, everybody puts their position out there and says what they're thinking before the vote, or either before the motion or after, but in regards to the item. But going back and forth between board members isn't going to change my mind, and me going back and forth between board members isn't gonna change anybody else's mind. I think that everybody states their position. And, um, so I'm just hoping that maybe we can get our board meetings to just move along a little more, everybody has their say, and, and, and go ahead with it. Um, I, I don't have a problem with what's being discussed. It seems like the way it's coming out is really starting to get on people's nerves. I know it's getting on mine. I've probably gotten on many other people's nerves, and I'm sorry for that if I have. But it's difficult. With COVID, it's difficult with a board, with open meeting law. You can't do a lot. You can, if you have an issue with one board member, I would encourage everybody that has that, if that happens, you speak with them on one-on-one alone, that's the best way. I learned, if you have an issue with somebody, you talk to them, you don't put it out in front of everybody else. So, I, I'm, hopefully I can quit with that, now get rid of my straw.
Okay. Thank you for that, Arlen. So some, some challenges with some contentious discussions, it sounds like, at your board meeting since we last met? And how do we deal with that? And actually, that was something, uh, it, it sounds like it tied into the information at the board, maybe, or, uh, what information is being provided for the board? And that was one of the things that you talked about last time, so we can maybe jump back to that as well. And then certainly, you're spot on, when there are challenges between individual board members that should be handled one-on-one and not at the board table. And yet, again, if that's happening, what message are you sending to everyone? Internal and external stakeholders? So thank you for that, Arlen. Appreciate it. Okay, who would like to go next? We are, uh, who do we have? Jim and Mike, I think.
Yeah. I'll, I'll go. I was thinking, um, it's really interesting that school board members are the only public servants who are required to learn what their responsibilities are. And, um, and it's just those two Phase One and Phase Two courses that, that we need to take. But it's really helpful to take more courses. Uh, when you take those courses, you meet a lot of other people who are also doing your work, and you get to hear a lot of very interesting things. I remember being at one where, uh, I think it was about technology, or else we were talking to these guys about technology, and they were, they were from way up north, and they went through teachers really fast, because it's basically a proving ground, you know, the introductory teachers, and then they move on to somewhere more lucrative, or with a larger population center where there's more for young adults to do. But they were so far ahead of us technologically, that it, it just blew my mind, and it made me think, uh, you know, the, the advantages and disadvantages of, of your district. Red Wing is a very attractive place to live. It's an attractive place to raise a family. Uh, so I think we tend to get long-term people working here. And where I'm going with this, don't ask me. But the, the fact that, uh, I think a lot of members could use more professional development as board members. I guess that's what Heidi was saying, though, that, that it's offered, it's not, you know, you have to take time o-out of your day to do it, but it is really a valuable, uh, experience, and makes you much more of an asset to the school board than simply being elected to a, uh, to serve on a community governmental office and retain your ideas without exchanging it with other people who are doing the same thing that you're doing. Uh, it's, I, in, I enjoy the exchange of ideas. It's really, uh, it's, it's, it's a big thing for me. I like to hear what other people think and what other people are doing, and, and where it goes. And, uh, but as a board member, you have a responsibility to, to the board and to the community that you're working for, to remain, uh, to remain civil, and I might not be civil all the time, but, but to remain civil and, and be, uh, be forthright without the, without becoming contentious. And, uh, I suppose I, I participate in that contention. I don't think anybody would doubt that. And as for Arlen, I mean, who would have thought Arlen would become a parliamentarian? But there he is, telling us to simmer down, and, and, and he's right. We should just say our piece and step aside, and it shouldn't have to go back and forth. And, uh, that's a, it's a huge, uh, you know, it's, it, it is something, and it, it would help if, if we did that. But I think additional training, uh, gives you, um, more, more knowledge about the job that you're supposed to do, as well as that interacting with other people. That's huge.
Thank you for that, Mike. I appreciate your comments on how important training is, and you're absolutely right. As board members, you're aware of this, but our listening audience may not realize that this is the only elected governing board in the state of Minnesota where there is legislation that says you have to participate in training, and that is one of the links that Minnesota School Boards Association, our association, provides for you. And then certainly, we go above and beyond. So as new board members come onboard, there's Phase One and Phase Two, but there are also, as a, a number of you have stated, there's our Phase Three with the High Performing Board. There's Phase Four that talks about community engagement and all the policies. And then we have a whole host of other things, summer seminar, leadership conference, and things like that. Sometimes boards will say, well, we don't want to spend money on ourselves to get trained. We need to spend that money on the students. And at MSBA, we say, think about it in the fact that you are part of the team, you are the top of the team here in leading the district, and if you can't find some time and energy and some finances to get trained, are you really serving the school district as well as you should? So any kinds of opportunities that are available to you, we do hope that you'll participate in, and then encourage your new board members as well. I also want to note the word civility. That was a word that I wanted to use yet tonight, and I don't think that I've used it. But I think civility is something that, as elected officials, we all need to have as part of our mantra of how we operate. We can come together and we can disagree, we can be disappointed in people, but we need to be civil about it. And at the end of the day, you come to make, together and make a decision as a team, and you, you respect that, you support that, and you move on. I may be in the minority tonight, but the next time I'll be in the majority. We've all been there, and I bet if you went around and shared examples, you could say, yep, I remember that, times where I wasn't very happy because it didn't go the way that I thought it should. But in the end, you pull together as a team, and that's what it's all about. And it sends a positive message to your community. It makes Karsten and the administrative team's life much easier because they're united, and so he can move forward, not knowing that, uh, he can then manage the decisions based on, based on knowing that you're all gonna be there to support it and not to undermine it. So thank you for using that, that word tonight as well. Moving on, Jim, I'll call on you next, please.
Pass.
Jim, do you have any comments that you'd like to share as far as the process? I mean, we'd really like to hear from you, and I think this is, this is why we're joined together this evening, is to review, um, any comments. As you reviewed the summary that I shared, things that you felt made sense, things that you believe as a board team that you should be committed to, things that you disagree with that have been said this evening. Really think this is your opportunity to, to share those thoughts.
Well, thank you, Gail. I hope what I say takes, people are actually digest it and actually take it for heart. It's nothing, but I want to, but I, I'll be honest, I haven't felt like, uh, some board members here, even accepted me ever, once I got elected, uh, the board. Been on boards for 20-some years, so it's not like the first time I've ever been on a board. And, uh, um, yeah, I was not, by Mike and Heidi, never once approached, once I got on the board, welcome aboard, how you doing, anything I can do to help. So I find it interesting now that we're doing this, which I think is a wonderful idea, and I'd like to be part of it, first I heard of it. So I think it's vital for a board to welcome their new members, do what they can to help them get acclimated, not tell them what they have to do, but to be open and with them to say, is there anything I can answer, try to answer for you, or get you the information for you, um, your thoughts and all that? So I, I will do that individually, I guess, reach out to them as, as I would, as, as the, some of the other ones on the board reached out to me when I got on. Uh, so, um, you talk about, you know, trust is a big thing. I'm a, I'm an old, I'm a retired cop, uh, all my years, a county commissioner. Trust, once you break my trust, once, it's very hard to get it back, simple as that. And, uh, the one-on-ones came about because I think I, I was, I and others brought it up on the meeting, that we weren't being, uh, um, information wasn't being shared with us, or, um, the superintendent was just not communicating with us. For an example, uh, we had our one-on-one on, uh, August 5th, the first one, uh, in the district office with our mask on and all that. That day, he called me with some information, which is a good step. But the last time he called me about any information with the school board was five months before that, March 5th, March 3rd or 5th. Why was that? Who knows? So I shared that with him, that's what he called. Uh, I, I, I like the one-on-ones. Unfortunately, I, I don't think, um, I, I, I don't think the information is valued by him. For instance, I, I talked about a finance person in our office district, and he knows my feeling about getting somebody full-time. The next meeting, 10 days later, he brings up a contract to renew the existing contract with the finance person for three years. Unfortunately, neglected to mention, and then maybe the board members can speak up, they probably read it, but I don't recall the conversation, but I mean, by, we can get out in 60 days, that there's a 20% penalty if we do. So those things, uh, trust is built over time. I'm willing to give anybody opportunity to, to, uh, to, uh, trust. So with that, uh, there was more, but I, I don't think it's, it's, uh, I, I'll do what I can to try to help, um, people coming on, to help to make this a good board, because I, I will be here for two more years, minimum. And, uh, I, I graduated from here, went to school here, obviously went to school here, graduated from here, worked all my life here, vested in the community, and, um, I want to see it get better than what it is. Um, I don't, I think with the dwindling enrollment, we need to do more than just talk about it. We need to get in more involved, which we're, looks like we're gonna finally do that, starting in November. Uh, so it's gonna take more than just a little bit, but, uh, I'm willing to try to do what I can do, because I, I can bring a lot to the table if people allow me to, and, uh, I don't think that was the case, at least I felt that was the case by some of the board members. So, thank you, Gail, for taking time to, um, do this.
Oh, gosh. Yeah, thank you so much, Jim, for your honesty, and I value your feedback. If that's how you're feeling, it is something that needs to be addressed. I know that you shared a little bit of those comments the last time. What I really appreciate... What I really appreciate is your willingness to move forward and, uh, knowing how you will receive board members. And this is not to say that, uh, other board members are wrong. I mean, I haven't been there, so I, I don't know. Maybe some felt like they welcomed or reached out. I, I can't speak for that. But what I can say is if that's how you're feeling, then how do we work on that in the future? And that's a hard pill sometimes to swallow. If I were sitting there as one of your fellow board members, I might be like, oh, okay. But I think it, it's been articulated and it's something that does need to be addressed. And, and hopefully some of it can be addressed before the end of the year, before there is a shift. But definitely as you move forward with a new board team, you know, the interesting thing is you're going to start to become one of those senior board members, Jim, now. So people are going to start looking to you for, for advice. And you obviously bring a lot of, uh, expertise to the board table with being a community member, with your role in law enforcement, having served as a county commissioner. And in my work world with the university, I get to work with county commissioners a lot. And so you have a lot of interesting perspectives that you can bring. And actually, one of the things that I think is pretty unique is that you also bring to that board table ways that you can bridge partnerships between the school district and the county if they're not already happening. So I just want to toss that out. So I think that the notion of moving forward is something I highlighted. I'm glad to hear that you felt the one-on-ones were a good step in the right direction. And I think that's what we're all about is, you know, to, to share our concerns, voice them. We can't change the past. If I tried to go back and change all the things that I feel bad about, I probably wouldn't be able to sleep at night and we all know that, I, for all of us. And so I think that's why we had this discussion, so that we can move forward, both now in the short term and also long-term as we, you look at reforming in the, uh, the months to come. So certainly appreciate the comments that you've made. With that, I need to ask, has Holly joined us? I don't see her on my screen. Okay, Pam is shaking her head no, okay. So with that, Pam, I'm actually going to turn to you one more time. So you spoke as a, a board chair before. Is there anything you want to add to your comments at this point?
Yeah, a couple of things. Number one is, you know, um, just to re-highlight, uh, we didn't get a chance to talk about this, Carsten, but, um, you had mentioned to me in the last week about the school board procedure handbook that you've been working on. And so we are beefing that up as well. So I just didn't want that to get lost in the shuffle of talking about what we have done and what we need to do in the future. So that is being addressed, um, and will be a part of that binder as well. But then I just jotted this down. This is precisely, Jim and others, why this evaluation, this self-evaluation is so important and why having workshops is so important because some of these comments and concerns don't get hashed out in our meetings. We just don't have time for it. And so I think it's a really important, useful, uh, use of our time this evening and back in July to just be able to talk about where we're all at and what's working well, but what's not working well, because we don't want to continue making the same mistakes. Um, and I think we do have an opportunity and a desire to make things better for this board and for the new board moving forward. So I thank you for your honesty and your feedback. We're not perfect, we're never going to be perfect. But I think if we have a commitment to working together and trying and moving forward, that's all we can ask, um, in turn, and, and also a shared vision. We need to have that shared vision of how we want to conduct business, um, on the screen together. So, um, thank you, Jim, for that honest feedback. And, uh, you have my commitment for sure. And I think I can speak for this board when I say that, uh, I think we are committed to making some changes, uh, so that we don't continue making the same mistakes in the future.
Thank you, Pam, for that. And you segued that really nicely because that was where I was going to head next. Um, and again, if Holly joins us, please let me know and, and I'll kind of recap and try and get some feedback, ask her for some feedback as well. But, um, I think Pam hit the nail on the head. Having taken that assessment was really a step in the right direction in being able to just talk about board interactions, how you view, view all those standards of, of board leadership that were part of the school board self-evaluation. And so again, I do commend you for taking time to do that. The thing that gets to be really uncomfortable is it would be so nice if we could go behind closed doors and have a conversation, but that's not the world that you live in as board members, as an elected body. And so sometimes it's hard to say what you want to say when you know that you've got people sitting in the audience or live streaming. At the same time, I think it's a really positive thing because I'm guessing that there's not a person watching who can't empathize with you as an individual and with you as a team. We've kind of all been there before. And so I think to show that you really care about your personal, your, your personal, your professional interactions as a board team is really positive, both now and then as you move on. So I do appreciate that. Remember with the school board self-evaluation, part of the big picture was about strategic governance. And I know last time I talked about the fact that from your district plan, from your strat plan, your strategic plan, you have goals that are listed. And so our intent is that you'll tie the district goals to your board goals and also tie them to the goals that you have for Carsten as your superintendent. So with that in mind, I wanted to move into some of the meat and potatoes. I think a lot of the things we've talked about has been the conduct and ethics. And we're going to wrap up with that this evening. But I also wanted to take a look at some of the other pieces. Uh, one of the things that I wanted to make sure to talk about, and you've already talked about it and hats off to you, is the fact that you see the importance of doing some type of orientation training for the newly elected board members. And I wrote a note here when a couple of you were talking. As soon as the board transitions, there will be new norms, new interactions. And really, I, I can't tell you enough how much you need to put your energies into making those new board members feel welcome, helping them get to know who you are. Use that new board member orientation gear at a glance in bringing them onboard and up to speed. And that can happen right after the election. Also, I want to make sure to say that as you are a newly formed board, you're going to have the stages of board development. And I wrote myself a little note because these are things that we talk about when we do our training for new board members. So it's the form, storm, norm, perform and deform or reform over, all over again, a restart. And so what's going to happen is you're going to start to form a new team. You're still going to carry the things, the, the, um, experiences, the expertise from this current board that I see here in front of me this more, this evening in the virtual meeting. But you're going to start to form as a new board. And there's going to be this time of getting to know one another. So put your energy into doing that and figure out some creative ways. It's going to mean some one-on-ones. It might mean some trainings and things like that, that you want to work on. You're going to also fall into some storming phases. And you've heard us talk about that. Eventually there's going to be that little, you know, I'm the new person or I'm the experienced person or I've been here X number of years. There's going to be some storming as everybody kind of feels their way around. They're going to test things out. They're going to test Carsten as superintendent. He might test them right back. And so there's going to be some storming, so be prepared for that. And when that happens, be gentle on yourself. Set good examples for those of you that are at the board table right now that will be returning. Eventually you're going to move into that norming phase. And that's going to be the time where, okay, I kind of figured it out now. I kind of know how Gail operates and I got it figured out, what Katie needs. And so you as individual board members, understand your fellow board members. It's also the time that Carsten is going to be figuring out too, exactly what the new board members need for information and, and background and things like that. And then as you move through that, you're going to start to perform. And that's when things really click along. And it's, uh, as we say at MSBA, uh, you can start finishing one another's sentences. And that's really where you want to head, is get to that point so that you can be supportive. You start to, to perform. Right now you are in what we would call the deform. And I, I always hate that word. I wish I could think of something more positive because it doesn't sound real good. But what it means is you're in transition. You're going to have some changes on your team. Heidi has made a tough decision. She's going to move forward and look at new opportunities in her world. And so you know, you're going to have at, at least, uh, one new person that is going to join your team. So do take these last few meetings to, to be, be grateful for that. Um, and Heidi even mentioned too, you know, she's, she's coming here with lots of mixed emotions. Well, let her acknowledge those and I hope you acknowledge them for her too. And for any other board members who will not be returning, that you take time to look at the things that you've accomplished because you really have accomplished a lot. Who else can say that I was on the board when COVID hit? That's something you'll always take with you. And who else can say, we had to just flip over everything we knew in the world of being an, a, a board member and for Carsten in the world of being a superintendent and leading the administrative team? So do take some time to acknowledge that. I, I think, um, that will be a, a good way to wind down and then prepare for the, the new group that is going to be moving forward with you. So I did have that new member orientation and now I'm, I'm moving to the part here where I'm hoping that we'll start looking at a few goals that you'll work on in this new year. And so from what I've heard, it sounds like orientation with new board members is something that would be one of your priorities. We'll take a look at that again. What nods, yes, no, thumbs up? Is there agreement on that, commitment on that? Okay, very good. And I would also say, thank you. And I would also say that you'll want to look at mentors for your newly elected board members. So as you get reorganized, who, who is returning to the board? And, uh, look at who can serve in a mentor role. And I'm not sure if I said this when we came together the last time, but usually we say that the board chair should not be a mentor just because the board chair has a lot of other responsibilities and setting up agendas. The board chair is always going to be the sounding board for your superintendent. And so if you can avoid that happening, um, I think that would be, that would be good. If you can't, then by all means, your board chair should be a mentor as well. But, but think about that. And remember as mentor, you're just there to support. You're there to answer questions. You know, I think about, uh, Jim's comments before, you know, when you've got your mentor, for sure you got one person that's looking out for you and is there for you. Not that the rest of you won't be, but there's that, that go-to person. And as a mentor, you're not going to be telling the new board members what to say or how to vote, but you're there in a support role. So I, I'm encouraging you on that. I'm going to, I'm going to pause for just a second. So it sounds like we had a lot of thumbs up, that that's something that you may want to look at as one of your goals moving forward. And, and in fact, I think you've already started moving in that direction. Another, a note that I, uh, wrote down was from last time was equity. And it sounds like you have moved forward in that direction. You've just scratched the surface. Do I, can I get a head nod or a thumbs up? Do you think that would be one of your higher priorities also to move forward with the equity? Or, or unmute if you want to and, and state your, state your comments.
Uh, I, this is Heidi, Gail. Um, I think, um, you have many, uh, new board members who are running with a high interest in that. And I expect some of them will be elected. So I think it's very high on the minds of the new folks coming in. I think it's, um, a high priority in the community. And I think as part of the district, uh, I think it would demonstrate, um, at, at least at the board level. I'm pretty sure lots of other people in the district structure are, are, um, aware of, um, you know, the equity challenges. But I think the board needs to be better informed about, you know, what does that mean? What does it look like? What are those demographics? You know, help us understand equity. It's a five-letter word, but it packs a lot of punch there. And then, um, you know, we have an equity team on the district now. So I think it's part, it's, it's a good, it's the right vehicle now to be looking at. But it also lends us opportunities for like, what does that training look like? You know, where do we seek answers? How do we, what is our staff doing for professional development that the board could tap into? So I think it's the right topic at the right time, but it's also an opportunity for the board to kind of practice, how do we pursue and apply best practices? That's what, that's one of the statements in our, um, education plan. And I think the board needs to embrace that too.
Sounds good. Anybody else want to weigh in?
I'm sorry, Arlen was in the queue and I jumped ahead.
I can say what I got any time. Want to go back to the orientation a little bit, what Jim said, very important in any year. But if there's ever a year that we need to really take a look at, it would probably be this year with three incumbents not running, the fourth one is up to election with four or 11 other, or 10 other people. We're going to have a turnover of, um, 43%, I believe it is, if my head's working right. Or 57 or 58% if Pam doesn't get reelected. And this orientation is going to have to be done so those people can participate in our board as we go. And I know we dropped the ball two years ago. I know we did and I, and I'm sorry for that. We should have done more. We should need to do that every election, but it's critical here now. And, and with that type of changeover in the board, I don't know where we're headed next year, I guess. But I think everybody has equity and equality and, and diversity on their mind. And I know we need to address it and we will be, I'm sure. But, um, so yeah, that's definitely a part of what's coming there. And if I might just point one other thing out of all the candidates that are running, one thing that was real common of the needs of our district is communication. And that falls in a lot of things. One is communicating to our new, uh, board members orientation. I mean, there's communication all over. So really communication is probably our biggest hurdle. Thank you.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Now, Gail, this is Jim and I'll, and I'll say, guy, you know, we're, we're pretty much, um, white people on the board that, and we're talking about, uh, equality and I'm all for it. I think we need to, uh, and I've said this in the meetings is, I don't care, you know, every child deserves to have the same education, no matter where they're from, what they look like, what their gender is or anything. Everyone should have the same opportunities and, uh, based upon, uh, the fact that we want to give them the best education possible, each and every student. And, uh, I think that is a, a goal that, uh, we should be doing. And I think we'll be seeing that going forward with, uh, uh, and starting in 2021 at the, at the, at the absolute least. So, thank you.
Yeah, very good. And, and as we, uh, talk about that board governance model, we know that the focus in the center of the board governance model is student achievement for us. So I appreciate that commitment. Thank you for that. Anybody else want to weigh in on anything?
I'll just, I just want to say that, uh, yeah, all of the, all of the candidates mentioned communication. The communication efforts of the district have, have swollen tremendously in the 12 years that I've been on the board and, and even more so in the last, uh, five or six years. And, uh, people, I think people use communication as a cop-out for, for not knowing what else is going on because communication is a two-way street and you can only give people so much information, they need to receive that information and act on it. And I think, I don't know if people need to be spoon-fed information or, uh, or why communication is such an issue. I mean, uh, I came on the board, uh, because I went to meetings and I did not, without the intention of joining the board. I just wanted to find out what was going on in the district. Uh, the superintendent recruited me because I suppose I showed up at meetings occasionally. And, uh, it's communication, it, it's a cop-out. We put out so much information. It's like, like we were talking about, uh, in our, in our, uh, in our finance meeting, we want to find out why people are leaving the district, why they aren't coming to our school. We want to find out why people are leaving the district, why they aren't coming to our school. But we don't want to offend people or we don't want to have, we get feedback from people that we're putting out too much information. Maybe, maybe that's another thing. There's so much information going out that people just throw it out. It's hard to figure out what people want, probably because everybody wants something different. And it's too hard to distill and properly place all the tidbits of information that each individual wants without a tremendous amount of data and dollars in order to sort through that data. But anyway, I don't, I'm not a fan of people who think communication is an issue. I think it's there if you, if you look for it.
Interesting. I would agree with you that it's, it's hard to figure out how to communicate in the best way. And I think a lot of districts have started doing a lot of different types of communication. The challenge is people are passionate about the district. They tune in as they can. Sometimes they get bits and pieces. And so the challenge, I think, to the board and to the superintendent is how do you communicate? And how do you get those concise messages out there? And how do you help people understand how they get information? You know, is it watching the board meetings? But it is a challenge because we've got generations who gather information differently. I might still like my Sunday Star Tribune that I can read, my newspaper. And there are others that are using only social media and some use combinations of both. But, and still, we have a responsibility as board members to communicate what's happening in the district. So that might be one of those things that as a board team, you'll want to talk about again. And as you reorganize, you may want to talk about it again as well. But I do appreciate what you're saying because I think every superintendent, every board around the state would say, well, we put out all kinds of information and it seems like it's never enough. It's, it's just, I wish I had the magic formula that I can give you. So I hear what you're saying on that, Mike. Thank you.
And even, you know, we, we stopped having people come to our parent teacher conferences or they would pull it, parent action committees, we call them. There wasn't a whole lot of action going on. But at least you were talking with the principal who attended most of the events and you had interaction among people. But people stopped coming. We tried it at night. We tried it during the day. We tried it at all different kinds of times. And it's, you know, if you want, if you want information, ultimately, you have to find it. I mean, it's there, it's available.
Very good. Thank you. Anybody else like, go ahead.
I'll just, I'll just jump in here. I hear what Mike's saying, but I don't, I don't fully agree with him. And I think, I don't think it's a cop out. I think it's loud and clear from 11 candidates that have filed that all or most of them brought up communication. Now, communication is differently viewed by different people, you know. Communication, are we thinking only what's going on in the district? Are we thinking what's going on in our school? Are we only thinking about what's happening at the school board? Are we thinking about what's going on with transportation? There's a lot of different ways. Miscommunication can be not shared or not, or misconstrued. So I, I, I think being somebody that came from a background where you had to communicate clearly, that it's, it's, it's important to listen to those that are bringing it up. And, you know, don't be afraid to ask them, what type of communication are you talking about not getting? And so there's a lot of different ways to communicate and different ways to, what to communicate about. So, but I think it's something that as a, as a board, as a school, district, communication obviously is, is important. And we need to be aware of it as we go forward.
So, yeah, I see, Jim. And maybe what, what I think or what I'm seeing is that when you're in it, you're always talking about it and you're always getting stuff going back and forth. So you think that, but we should know that not everybody understands that and that not everybody gets it. But it's just so hard to figure out an effective way to really please everybody with, with what they want to know specifically from what's going on all across the board, not just in school districts or this school district.
Well, and I'll just add that, you know, one of the pieces that I've seen in the last couple of years, the addition of the e-news has been very important and very helpful. We send out a weekly email to all of our subscribers on what's going on in the district. So that's been a very helpful tool. But, you know, in tying everything back to our strategic plan, which is what you had started this goal conversation about, Gail, is one of our strategic directions is to improve communication with family, staff and the community. And so perhaps this board, that should be a goal that, that we circle back to. There are some things that we're doing really great. There's also some social media and some Instagram things that are happening out there. But are we reaching, you know, are we doing so much on social media that we're, we're missing the paper or the radio or the people who are not on social media? So, you know, maybe that is something. I'm hearing this, this theme continue back through a couple of board members now. So maybe that is worth looking at as a goal for the district. The other piece, one of our strategic directions is to align district building and classroom goals. And we should even add in there, align district, school board building and classroom goals. Because, and, and there's a great example of how we've been able to do that with this equity piece. I think I mentioned to you, Gail, when we spoke this week, that with that equity, equity team that's been formed, we put, as a board, talked about what our priorities are and it was going to be taken back to the administrative team to look at what our priorities were and then where their priorities are and where those align. And then to come up with an equity statement based on those goals. And so I'm encouraged and excited to think about how we are doing a lot with forming our goals and making sure that they are a part of our strategic direction. So I think we are really on the right track. It's just a matter of defining those things and then being committed to them. And maybe, maybe we write those three goals down on a sticky note and put them on our computer so that they're front and center every time we meet as a group. So just a suggestion and wanted to circle back on some of that information.
That is, that is a very good suggestion. Appreciate that. And yes, you're right, you do want to tie your goals back to the district goals and tie Karsten's goals, superintendent goals in with that as well. Were there any other items from my summary from the last time that folks wanted to talk about? I also heard a comment earlier about the, it actually would be question number six on page two of my summary, the defined process for gathering information prior to making decisions. I think that might tie into the communication. But I did not want to lose sight of that one because you spent a lot of time talking about that. The other one that seemed to be discussed quite a bit last time was question sixty-six, which is on page four of my summary, which is talking about the board's roles and responsibilities, making sure that the public understands them. And then as board members, that you are, are following them and communicating what your role is as a board member. In fact, that as a one person, you can't make any changes. And as one person, you're not the spokesperson for the board. That your decisions come about as a team and you're one vote at the board table. So educating the community on that. And we talked about chain of command or chain of responsibility. Does anybody want to comment on either of those two things? And then I will also, before I ask for comments, both of those would actually tie into your procedural handbook. That could just be built right in. And in fact, with your current code of ethics, you really have addressed that already. Anybody want to make any comments on that?
Gail, if I could just jump in, this is Karsten. Sorry, Heidi.
Oh, go ahead.
I want to thank you for including some verbiage with some of those items. That really helps a lot so we don't waste our time, you know, developing that. We can just focus on the most important stuff. So thank you for that.
Yep, very good. Okay, so as we think about those two items, it might be that you just agree that those are things that are gonna get rolled into that procedure handbook. And they're not necessarily goals that you would look at. It's just as Karsten started doing one-on-ones, it's something that you just start doing as a practice. Any comments about that, disagreements on that?
Well, I would agree, Gail. I think those are high priorities for me as far as, you know, and again, I'm a short timer here because I'll be gone in weeks. But I think that speaks a lot to our understanding of roles and responsibilities. And, you know, people are always asking, well, isn't that how it works? And I said, no, not really, you know. You know, as long, you know, I think, you know, I really like the school board procedures. It was started years ago when I was board chair and it's kind of disappeared for a while. And I don't really know that it's gotten the attention it needed to. But as far as from board members. But I think it really, our intent was to help provide some in-your-hand guidance, you know, about what is this job about? Because you, you run for office, you have certain personal expectations. It turns out that's not really what you do. And then you work as the board team. You know, you're not the guy allowed to like, you know, the tail wagging the dog here. You have to work together and consensus. And if, as you said earlier in the meeting, if somebody says, I don't think that's the direction the district should go. And two, and two of you say, well, that's the thing, that's what we want. But five of us said, well, no, I think there's a different priority here. You know, then you have to reassess kind of where you're at. So I was, I was wondering if, you know, we, you said priority number one, new board member orientation. But to me, an adjunct activity to that then is, you know, what is the other training that we expect? You know, as from, from each other? You know, have we gone out and learned that job? You know, if we're on a negotiations team, have we taken a negotiations seminar? If we're working on policy committee, do, are we attending the sexual harassment webinar? You know, that somebody else is offering for training. So I'm, I'm just wondering if, if the board would consider, you know, an adjunct activity as, as training for everyone so that you always feel like you're a, you're a work in progress, you know, you're, you're continuous improvement. And that means you're reflecting that ethic to the rest of the district too. The staff, the students, the community. Because I think that's where a lot of our tension is now is kind of how we understand those roles and responsibilities between a board member and a superintendent or, you know, the communication piece or what have you. So I think that's, that's important for us to kind of address. And I think, I think some of it will come through that school board procedures piece. But, and that's a, that's a document. But I think, as we've kind of said and other people I've identified, if you go to a training, you're talking to other people. You're hearing what's happening in their district. I think there's a real value, at least for me, to have context about what else is going on out there? What's, what's meaningful, what's relevant? What are the, what is the professionally guided staff member telling you about? Let's reexamine this, this area. You know, can, can we do it differently or better? So anyway, I, I like the training idea. I just think maybe the board should expand it beyond just new board members. There's always, I mean, I think that's one of the strongest ways you demonstrate that you're a lifelong learner. You know, you're actively engaged in learning. And that, and that means the job that you're doing because there's always something new to learn.
Gail, this is Jim. Are you, are you referring to, still talking about question sixty-six you're talking about?
Yeah, if you have some comments that you'd like to make.
Well, I think we, as a board, and the new board comes on, we need to have a discussion about, let's just say, let's just talk emails, for instance, which I think this is a value included in the communication piece. You know, people will contact everybody as a board member. You know, somebody will send an email to all the board members. However, I, I think people look at us as elected people to represent them. And for us to, I realize we should, we should have, we should have some discussion about, if you want to reply back, it should be just one reply to that person, not include everybody because now you're getting into that concern of the open meeting law and discussions and all that.
Serial emails, yeah.
Serial emails. So if you, I think we need to have a big discussion instead of just one person being the spokesperson because people are out there thinking that I'm emailing the board, but I'm not only hearing from one person what's going on. So we need to have a discussion in 2021 about that because as a board member, if somebody brings up a topic, I have no problem saying, hey, thanks for the information. I'll forward it on or I'll do something up to this or that. But, yeah, I get it. We need to have that clear discussion and, and know that we're all in agreement as to how we're going forward with it. But, yeah, I think that we have to wait till the new board comes on to more get more depth into that.
Right. And I think for all of us as board members, it's important to respond to whoever has, you know, whether they talk to you in the grocery store or if it's the email that you acknowledge them. And then I think the point being that you can't fix it. You know, in our phase one, we show the, the little vignette of Sheldon and the person that approaches him in the grocery store and the mother wants Sheldon to fix things. And so that's, that's the thing that you need to be cautious of, which is the thing that you'll be helping educate the new board members. And in relation to question sixty-six, I'm thinking, as Karsten said before, there might be some things there that you can glean into what your new procedure will be and how you have that in writing in there. And it will be a model for the new board members, especially so that they understand. They can't make promises, they shouldn't be making promises and they can't fix things. But also to be grateful that people have, and kind and appreciative that people have approached them. So thank you for that. Okay, so as we start kind of honing in, I'm gonna ask one more time, are there any other topics in that summary that folks would like to address this evening? And if not, as I see things starting to then congeal a little bit for you in my notes, you've talked about not only the orientation for your newly elected board members, but then also the, the board training. And I also wrote the word team building as you reorganize seems to be something I've heard you talk a lot about that you want to make a commitment to or at least consider making a commitment to if you're looking, as you look at goals. Equity has come up and you have all done a nice job of identifying the challenges that you need more training. And this is your opportunity now to focus on that. And communication came up. And that could be tied into your orientation, board training and communication. It really could be all lumped together, if you will. And then we don't want to lose sight of your strategic plan and making sure that you're aligning your work with what those goals are within the strategic plan, which actually, as Pam said before, includes communication and the alignment of building goals. So linking those all together. The other things kind of fall under your procedures and a lot of things fall within the conduct and ethics or code of ethics. And I did, Pam had shared the code of ethics and I did look at that. And really, as I think about it, in your code of ethics that you just reviewed back in August of 2020, August 17, a lot of the things in that conduct and ethics category that we've talked about are really addressed here. And so a lot of it ties back to just following your code of ethics for you and also for the newly elected board members. So this will be a key teaching tool, I believe. Things I highlighted was listening to the opinion of others, supporting decisions of the board. I wrote the word civility in here when I was looking at this before. Working through the super, working with the superintendent, not over or around, delegating the board decisions to the superintendent. You've got a section on maintaining relations with members of the school board, being respectful, not making disparaging comments, keeping an open mind. You've got another category with responsibility to the community. And I think here it's And I think here, it's making sure that you tie your decisions to that strategic plan. I know that it's one that you worked hard on, and you had community engagement in that. And this one also is making sure that you've got the financial information that you need as well. And then there is a section on working with the superintendent of schools and staff and holding your superintendent responsible for the management, the administration of the district, giving your superintendent the authority of leading. And what else did I highlight here? Making sure that you hear back from your superintendent. I mean, it's fair. You have handed over responsibility, but you also want to hear back on how things are going. And there's one in here about referring your complaints, or I say, the complaints, the questions, and the comments to the proper chain of command. So, you have all those words in here. And I think it's a matter of just following. And maybe, I don't know, Pam, if you bring this to your board meetings, but as chair, I know that there are districts where that code of ethics sits right there, so it can be referenced by your board chair and also by other board members too, just to reel you back in, because it sounds like there's times when things have gone outside of probably the boundaries of working together. So, again, I've got that whole category of orientation, board training, team building, and communication, your equity focus, and then following your strategic plan, always making decisions based on the strategic plan and acknowledging that. So, as motions are being made, actions are being taken, I would, if it isn't already happening, I would suggest that as Carsten and Pam are building the board agenda, that there's just a notation in there that this decision would relate to this particular category within our strategic plan. And then if it doesn't, there may be a good reason why it doesn't, or it might be something that you would want to question and have a discussion about. But my guess is that decisions that are going to come to the board are going to relate to that strategic plan. So, give me some feedback on that. What are you thinking about? What do you, how does that sound? Does that make sense?
I think that's, that's a good scope. Want to expand that anymore for the board, especially new board members? That's enough. I think you've covered it well, and I think that's all you can ask of us right now, and then that transition to the future board. I think that's, that's pretty good.
How about the others? Thanks, Heidi. How about the others' thoughts? Are we missing something here? Are you frustrated about something? You thinking it's not going to work? It's going to work?
One of the things that I wrote down that I chuckled at, Gail, was I wrote team building as well. Just in 2020, we started these monthly workshops. And again, without having these workshops, we don't really have an opportunity to chat and get to know each other and just talk without having to make motions and decisions. This is more of a time, you know, a work session. And so, now that we've kind of gone through almost a full year of these school board workshops once a month, you know, we will have some time where we can build in some team building, probably once a year. We can make sure that those workshops at least once in a year focused on some of that. We can also add in some of those educational opportunities, Heidi, that you had spoken on. And again, in our strategic plan, one of our goals is to provide teachers more opportunities for professional learning and strategies for targeted professional development. And that should be what we work on as a board as well. So, if we can continue to bring some more opportunities for learning even to the workshop agenda, I think that's an important piece and a good avenue that we can actually use that time for in addition to some other things. But I chuckled at that, Gail.
Nice coincidence. Very good. Let's hear from the rest of you. Arlen, thoughts on those three categories to focus on? From your years of expertise, sir?
Well, my years of expertise are the, times are different than they've ever been this year.
Yes.
And how we are doing are different than we've ever been before. And I think, what do I think? Those goals are worthy. You know, I want to go back to one thing on communication. I don't know if that's a board issue, the communication part necessarily. But on the other end of it, part of the thing that we mentioned in our goals here was engaging the public to participate in budgeting and budget discussions and surveys and stuff. And sometimes participating creates that communication. So, that's not really in your specific stuff. I'm going to go with the flow of what you said on the rest of it.
Okay. I actually, that's, well, I made a note too. We're talking both internal and external communication, aren't we? We need to have that community input and, just like you've got your board committees, where you've got the parents, you've got the students. So, I think that will be helpful. Good. Janie, how about for you? Thoughts on those three areas?
I think it all sounds really good too. I think just when it comes to civility and getting along, that is something that each board member just has to make sure that they, you know, commit to themselves. You know, I guess one thing would be, you know, being a past chair, and I'm sure Heidi and Pam and Arlen and those of us that have chaired any board, you know, it's always hard to know what to do or what's the constructive way to maybe bring people together. Or, you know, and I think we've touched on that. You need to talk to other board members one-on-one. And so, I guess that's what we need to encourage to happen too, is just, you know, when we do have issues or when someone's out of line, maybe to have personal conversations. But I don't know if you have other tools or advice on that one, because I know when you're in a leadership position, that can be hard, whether it's a nonprofit board or a government board or anything. And I guess I think the communication thing is very much of just, you know, we, obviously, the last spring and summer, it was hard to know what to communicate. So, I think that lends itself to just the current situations of, you know, Carsten and many of us, you know, did not hear from him for many months just because of what we were in and what he was focused on. So, um, yeah, you know, I think I just want, I think, again, just getting those new board members and kind of some of the things that we've worked on, I continue to think that is the main number one priority to me. So.
Okay, good. Thanks, Janie. How about Jim? Thoughts from you on the three topic areas?
Oh, I'm fine. I've spoken too much tonight already. So.
Oh, you have not.
No, that's fine. I think as we go forward, this whole board, the new board, this would be a good thing to start, right? Probably in January to go through some of this, to see how they feel too. Because like Arlen said, it could be three or four new members, depending upon what happens in next Tuesday. And time will, you know, time will tell. I think when you got 30 to 40, 50, 60% of your board makeup changing, you know, we should respect their ability to come in, step in, and be involved in some of this going forward too, because they're going to be here for four years. So, we should have that conversation with them as well.
Absolutely. Well said on that. Mike, how about for you?
Yeah, I think, I think, I think having the mentors, or at least introducing people, although it's hard, it's going to be hard to do under COVID, but not necessarily. But having the people get together, I mean, that's what the January MSBA thing is about, is getting together and meeting your new coworkers. For me, the, what, what we really need to work on is understanding that the board has to work together. And while everybody has their things that they would like to see pursued, I could run through a whole list of things that I would have liked to see done in the district that are, that are, nothing is happening on. But when your preferred projects aren't pursued, then you need to accept that and work with the board and not actively against it. We also need to work with our administrators, because they are the experts. We are, you know, somebody might come on the board with expertise in some aspect of education. But really, we are the people who hire the superintendent, who hires his administrators. And he hires people who supposedly he will trust and be able to work with. And we need to trust those administrators. And if you have questions about what it is that they're doing or what they're saying, then you question that. But you accept the final result and endorse it. And you don't, you don't go out questioning what went on in the school board's meeting. You say it in the meeting, but then when the decision is made, you need to follow that decision. Otherwise, you're just subverting the district and not, you're not doing yourself or the students or the district any favors by not accepting what the board has decided to do. And I think following the, those steps sound like a good idea. Keep moving forward and interact with each other as much as you can. But that's all, that's about all I can figure out.
Very good. Thank you for that, Mike. Appreciate your comments with working together, respecting. Really, you're saying respecting the roles and responsibilities, the roles of the board and roles and responsibilities of the superintendent and administration as well. Very good.
It's really important, because otherwise, you're, if you're not supporting them, you're undermining them.
You're absolutely right. Very good. Carsten, before I wrap up here this evening, anything that you would like to share with this group? Any comments? Any thoughts? Reaction to these areas?
I like the three areas that we've talked about. And I know the full administrative team would be very supportive as well. I think one important issue to consider is just coherency, because we have a lot of things with the educational plan. We have goals for me. We have these goals, and it just keeps morphing. But I think, I think we'll be on the same page as far as trying to consolidate those goals, because we'll be a lot stronger if we can focus on a few rather than many.
Very good. Thanks for that. And certainly, the idea behind this is not to create a lot of additional work for anyone. So, I'm glad that you mentioned that, so that I can just say that again. And that's why we talked about, you know, one or two things that you're going to work on. I think that your strategic plan kind of just aligns with what you're doing anyway, and so there's some tweaking. So, hopefully, you'll be able to tie those goals to your superintendent goals and also to the board goals, so that you're all working on the same page. And then, and that actually ties in the equity theme as well. And then along the side is this emphasis on really team building for the new year, the orientation, the board trainings, the team building, and the communication that you'll be working on. Anybody have any other last thoughts, comments, ideas? Arlen?
Yeah, I just want to say this once again. I respect everybody that has an opinion differing from mine. I realize everybody on this board is doing what they think is best for the kids, be it somebody that's watching the budget numbers and wanting to make sure we have enough money two years from now to educate our kids, to somebody else saying, well, we'll spend whatever it is this year. We have to get through this year. We'll deal with it. Everybody is looking at it, what's best for the kids, the way they're looking at it. So, like I say, I respect differing opinions, and I think that's important for everybody to do. And I probably haven't been as respectful as I should be at some meetings, and I'm sorry for that if I've done that to anybody. But I know everybody's goal here is for what's best for our school and our community. And I think we all have to keep that in perspective as we move forward and realize that we may not see the goal is the same. It's how we get there is what's different. I'm very conservative in exposing our students to additional activities and stuff, because I want to keep our schools open longer and run less risk of having a COVID, a huge COVID situation that would shut our schools down. Somebody else is saying the mental health is more important to our children, and that's what they're, and I respect that. I really do. I get it. But each one of us are here to do our job and do it the best way we think we can. And so, like I say, I respect everybody with differing opinions. And I want to, I'm going to work harder to not try to drag into long heated discussions. I'll accept what other people have.
Thank you for that, Arlen. I think as individual board members, the richness is what you each bring. You've got expertise. Heidi has. Janie does. Jim does. Mike does. Pam does, and Holly does, and that's what is rich about you. And because you all bring your experience, your values, and your expertise, you're not all going to agree all the time. And boy, if that's what you were as a board, that wouldn't be any fun either. You're not, you don't want to be a rubber stamp. So, I think that you really need to capitalize on those skills and values that folks bring to the board table. And I think the community likes that in the sense that all the questions have been asked then. So, I might really align with the views that Arlen has or Janie has. And now, I'm like, okay, my question's been answered. I understand why it didn't go in that particular direction. But I think that's very important. So, thank you for that. Very good. Anybody else? Any last final comments? Okay, so our parting thoughts here this evening are the things that you're going to be working on again, is that new member orientation, board training, team building, communication, kind of lumped into one. It really ties, a lot of that ties back to your code of ethics policy as well, and emphasis on equity. And Carsten will be the one that, and other administrative team members will be the ones that will lead you in that direction, making sure that you are building that into everything within your school district. And then utilizing that strategic plan, having that out there and making sure that you're using, basing your decisions on the direction, on the goals of that strategic plan. So, just to wrap up for me, you know, I thank you again for taking the school board's health evaluation. I think it was a wonderful opportunity for you to visit, learn more about one another, work through some bumps, if you will, and also look at all the good things that you are doing, the strengths that you have as a board team. We didn't spend a lot of time talking about those, but there were a lot of things in that assessment that you were all on the same page. And so, you need to be very, very proud of that for yourself. I would encourage you to take that board evaluation again next year. It's longitudinal, so you can take a look at your responses this year and build on them for next year. And so, that would be something that your board chair and then also Carsten can just probably put a note of, oh, let's see, let's talk about that, and then I can send the link out, and you can do that. I do want to say that I value all of you, and I value all your feedback, your input back in July and also tonight. You're a great group of people. I wish the very best to those who will be leaving the board. I know I talk mostly about Heidi, but I know there are others of you that have served this board for a long time, and you're moving on to other things. So, and I remember when I moved on, there's that, there's that bittersweetness about it. In some ways, you're like, oh, I'm ready to get off. In some ways, no, I'm not ready to leave this group. And so, I know that you'll have all those emotions. For those that will be remaining on the board, please be respectful of that in these next few months. But for those of you that will not be back in January, thank you, thank you, thank you very, very much for all that you have done. For those of you that will be remaining, returning, best wishes to all of you. Your challenge is to work hard at creating that new team, to be welcoming, to build a team, to know that you're going to have to hit the ground running with a lot of new faces on the board. Extend grace to all as you do that. And I hope that you do it in the spirit of civility and respect, and then learn to trust one another as you transition. And so, with that, a final thank you to all that you do as board members and Carsten to you as superintendent. to you as superintendent. This has probably been the craziest year ever, and it's not over with, as we know. So hang in there, take care of one another, and again, extend grace to each each other as you make decisions. I know that you're making it with the the best intent and and looking at the best for all the students within your district. I'm always available to you if you have any questions, you need to follow up, you want to run through scenarios of things. And it's not just me, we have a great staff at MSBA, so we're all here for you. So do not hesitate to reach out, school board member and Carsten as well. So do take advantage of us, we're here to help you. So with that, Madam Chair, Pam, I'm going to turn it back over to you, okay?
Thank you, Gail.
You're very welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Again, I I'd like to share our thanks, Gail. And, you know, one of the things that is striking me very much is that I think there are many more things that unite us than divide us. And I'm excited about the goals that you had outlined or helped us outline for a better, stronger board moving forward. So I'm very excited about that. And I think those those pieces are doable. With that, I will look for a motion to adjourn. So moved, Heidi Jones?
Michael.
Moved by Heidi, I think might be by nanosecond, Jim. So moved by Heidi and seconded by Mike. Any other discussion? We'll take.
Thanks, Gail. Thanks, Pam.
Thanks, Gail.
We'll take a call for adjournment, starting with Heidi.
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Arlen?
Aye.
Janie?
Aye.
And chair votes aye, so we are adjourned. Thank you so much, everyone. We'll see you soon.
Take care, everybody. Have a good evening. Bye-bye.